sanitation workers and filled some potholes and now serving lunch to some seniors here.
And Bonin was far from done. Next stop after this, meetings with cops, kids, and small business owners. All part of a day's work. But for all the cheer his visit brought to this center, Bonin also plans to get started on some serious plans for the city as well.
Big plan is to do as much as I can to improve our infrastructure here in the district, to increase the quality of services to our seniors and our kids, to build some mass transit, and to create some more good jobs for Los Angeles.
But small things first, like the rolls and the jello.
He's a very good worker, very fast and quick, and learn quick.
The hardest thing I've done today was filling the potholes, but this is a close second. I gotta move faster here.
Apparently, he wasn't really fast enough because he just got a scolding for talking to us.
They told you, the supervision here is very strict.
Later come the big challenges LA faces, but right now, the rolls, jello, and string beans are served. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The Felicia Mahud Senior Center is located in West LA. Meanwhile, in the 3rd Council District, Bob Blumenfield held his own community swearing-in. Anna Marcos was there.
Repeat after me. I, Bob Blumenfield.
I, Bob Blumenfield.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Close family, friends, and supporters came to watch the community swearing-in at Van Nuys City Hall as Councilmember Bob Blumenfield took his oath a second time.
Good government can help business and commerce thrive. Good government can foster social and economic justice. Good government can improve the quality of life for all of us.
Blumenfield, a former member of the California State Assembly, gave an indication of how he will lead LA's 3rd Council District. He'll do it with help from the people, with the bipartisanship he's known for.
Just as the city relies on appointed members, board members, and commission members to help it govern, I intend to rely and create community action teams to help me govern, made up of members of the community.
We confronted the greatest economic crisis the state had ever seen. In our first few weeks in office, we were called back into emergency session, met for 42 hours to deal with a budget deficit that was $60 billion, and a state budget that was $110 billion.
Mayor Eric Garcetti had some advice on how to govern the City of Angels.
It's a different job than being up in Sacramento. This is a place where people will find you. They'll hunt you down. They'll ask you, "Well, you can't come to my thing in Tarzana? Well, where are you gonna be, in Woodland Hills? Well, we can move it a half hour. It's only 10 minutes. We'll get you there."
Blumenfield will go from managing huge state budgets to managing time between all those small community meetings he'll have to attend. But his supporters have no doubt he'll govern just as well here as he did in Sacramento. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Some of Blumenfield's community action teams will help cover issues such as economic development in the valley, women's, senior, and veteran issues, and emergency preparedness. A fallen hero in LAPD was recently memorialized as city leaders name an intersection after him. Anna Marcos has more on the unveiling of Officer Mario Navidad Square.
Officer Mario Navidad may have fallen long ago in the line of duty, but he is not forgotten by his family, nor the LAPD, nor City Councilmember Paul Coretts.
Today, we're here to honor our fallen brother, Officer Mario Navidad. This intersection will be forever named after him, and his bravery will never be forgotten.
The unveiling of Officer Mario Navidad Square at Fairfax Avenue and Whitworth Drive marks the place where Navidad died in December 1996. He and his partner were chasing a shoplifter who had stolen beers from the 7-Eleven. The suspect, an armed gang member. Navidad fired, hitting the suspect in the chest and stomach before getting hit with a fatal bullet himself.
Every day, the folks to my right and behind us get up and put their uniform on to go to work. They know it could be their last day. And to have your life taken away over two damn six-packs of beer, I just cannot get over that.
We cannot understand, and may never understand, the pain and suffering that you have gone through. But rest assured, that you will always be part of our family.
More than 16 years later, the young kids he left behind are now entering college. But they say they will never forget, and the memorial will remind them.
It took a while, but it happened, and I appreciate what you guys all did.
The family has stayed strong in memory of the husband and father, whose childhood dream had always been to become a police officer. A dream he lived to achieve before becoming one of the fallen men and women in blue. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Officer Navidad was born in California but raised in Mexico. He returned to the U.S. to finish his education and achieve his dream of becoming a police officer. Every day, they risk their lives to ensure our safety. But recently, the LAPD and the LAFD came together on the court for a good cause. Rasha Goel has the story.
It's not something we see every day. A basketball game tip-off between Police Chief Charlie Beck and Fire Chief Brian Cummings. Between protecting the City of Angels and its residents, the Los Angeles Police and Fire Departments made some time to give back to the community with the Fourth Annual LAPD and LAFD Safe Summer Tip-Off Basketball Game and Youth Safety Festival.
This is where the Police Department and the Fire Department come together with the youth of Los Angeles to talk about safety during the summer. We have a lot of tips for them, a lot of displays, free lunch, which is a fantastic lunch, and then we have a great game of basketball.
Adding to the fun was actor-comedian Arsenio Hall, who served as a master of ceremonies. The event was held at the USC Galen Center on Figueroa Street, giving attendees an opportunity to learn about bullying, teen dating violence, beach and pool safety, emergency preparedness, summer safety resources, and much more.
This is about the kids. It's about educating the youth, bringing them out, letting them meet their local firefighters and local police officers.
Along with enjoying an afternoon of some hands-on fun. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
And in case you're wondering who won the game, it was very close. LAPD 51, LAFD 50. A community comes together to ramp up and restore a local park. Rasha Goel has more.
Three, two, one.
Skaters in the El Cerrito community brought out their skateboards to test out the renovated skate park at the El Cerrito Rec Center, something they have been anticipating for a year.
We have new and improved features that include new fencing, a new skate light, skating surface, stainless steel fasteners, and much more.
The $40,000 renovation was a partnership between the LA Department of Recreation and Parks and the designers from Spawn Ranch Skate Parks. It all happened after a group of kids approached Councilman Jose Huizar about fixing the skate park.
If everyone could have their fields and courts, why can't the skaters? You know what I mean? Everyone knows that skating, you know, started on the streets, but these parks keep them safe.
El Cerrito ain't got nothing to skate, so now we got this. It's very refurbished and also healthy environment for us to skate and drive.
Plus, a place to call their home. For the older skaters or the ones just starting out, it's a place they know they can always bring their board to. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Elsewhere in the city, a community is celebrating a brand-new park. Rasha Goel was there too.
Three, two, one.
Residents in the Harbor Gateway are celebrating a new park, the Harbor Gateway Pocket Park, all thanks to the 50 Parks Initiative, a public-private partnership that is helping add over 170 acres of new park space to the city.
This is a community that has never had a park, and we had families, children of all ages come and enjoy this incredible, incredible victory for the Harbor Gateway community.
What we want people in the community is to experience a park and dream.
The playground is named after Janet Shower, a longtime resident and active community member, who says it took nearly four years to make this park a reality. And when asked about the name dedication...
I really, really didn't know about the playground name. I did not. That was a complete surprise.
This park also signifies another important victory for this community.
We saw a high concentration of transsexual offenders here in Harbor Gateway, to the point where families were living in fear. And together, working with city departments and myself, we created this space to send a message that Harbor Gateway cannot be dumped upon.
The new park will give adults and kids an opportunity to feel safe while providing them with an outlet to exercise and be active. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Harbor Gateway Pocket Park is located at the corner of Torrance Boulevard and Denker Avenue. A new accessible park opens, Griffith Observatory returns to a full schedule, and a former councilman is honored. All these stories today on City Beat. 2nd District Councilmember Paul Krikorian joined with the Department of Recreation and Parks recently for the grand opening ceremony of Jamie Beth Slavin Park, a new all-access playground in North Hollywood.
It's a good reminder to all of us that not all children are blessed with perfect health. And what this opening of this playground does is it makes a statement that every kid in our community, regardless of any limitations they have on their physical ability, have a place to come to have fun, to enjoy the recreation that we provide in our parks.
Though designed for kids with limited mobility, the park is attractive to all kids, providing an opportunity for the entire family to enjoy a day in the park together.
This park gives my son an opportunity to play with his friends in the community and to be a part instead of always being on the sideline.
People think that with other people with disabilities, there's this barrier that they can't approach or break. It's really empowering for these people to see a park where they can finally be kids.
4th District Councilman Tom Labonge recently announced the Griffith Observatory is once again open on Tuesdays.
Because of budget challenges, our observatory, which has welcomed the world since 1935, had reduced days. And now, because of an effort by the City Council and the mayor, both the old mayor and the new mayor, Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Villagosa, but together, we've opened it up for six days a week, the original schedule that the observatory had.
The restoration of Tuesday service for the observatory is permanent, according to Labonge. Retired Councilmember Bill Rosendahl was honored recently with the naming of an LAPD cadet training room in his honor. Councilmembers Paul Coretts and Mike Bonin joined with the LAPD and members of the community for the occasion.
I know that every time I drive by here, I will think of you and everything that you've done, and it will continue to inspire me.
I hope that the spirit of his heart, that his name brings to this room, will live in this room and will help give spirit and meaning to the room.
Rosendahl served for eight years on the Los Angeles City Council. Councilmember Coretts also took time out to recognize members of the community who have helped make Fire Station 59 more of a home away from home for the firefighters helping keep LA safe.
We're here at Fire Station 59 to acknowledge and accept some things that some community folks have given, Friends of West Los Angeles, to the firefighters, things that make the fact that they live here more palatable, some new chairs and television and some gym equipment.
With shifts that can last more than 24 hours, these and other extras are a welcome addition to the station, especially with budgetary limitations. As anticipation grows for the opening of the new Tom Bradley International Terminal, LAX officials held a special gala event to celebrate this landmark accomplishment. Now that the hard work is done, airport and city officials took a night to let their hair down and enjoy the new Tom Bradley International Terminal they helped create during a red carpet, black tie event.
The passenger experience is just gonna be overwhelming when people come here. They're gonna love coming to Los Angeles now.
Folks walk the red carpet before going into the new terminal for some drinks, delicious food, and entertainment.
It is so cool to see a dream become a reality, and to see the reality actually greater than the dream.
Officials say tonight's celebration recognizes the hard work of many people and how they were able to work together to overcome major challenges.
It's taken a lot of people and an incredible amount of talent and a lot of dedication.
We're a little strong-headed, but we also agree.
But we agree.
We said it at the same time, see?
The first-class event was put on by Westfield and featured a 70-piece orchestra. The evening was hosted by Lisa Gibbons.
People are gonna want to come to the airport early just to spend time here, just to spend money here, and just to enjoy this experience.
And the star of tonight's gala is the 72-foot-tall digital interactive time tower. It's one of the premier media elements in the new terminal.
The electronics that they put into it and the graphics that they have on the screens are unparalleled.
The first-class event marked the beginning of a new modern era at LAX.
Come fly with us. Fabulous. Thank you, Ben.
Great drama, great music, and a race through great culture. It's all part of the magic in store throughout the City of Los Angeles in this week's Things to Do. This week, Grand Performances at California Plaza offers a very special noontime performance. Veteran drummer Cedric Leonardo handpicked this ensemble of accomplished musicians, adding tabla and Indian vocals to the iconic guitar-based gypsy music of his childhood. California Plaza is located at 4th and Olive in downtown Los Angeles. For more information, go to www.grandperformances.org. On Friday evening, it's time for another offering from the Griffith Park Free Shakespeare Festival. This week, an offering in the Shakespeare tradition with the 18th-century comedy She Stoops to Conquer, featuring romance, mistaken identity, and a thrilling chase. The fun begins at 7:00 PM in the Old Zoo. Remember, there's no seating, so bring a blanket or a low-back chair. For more information and directions, call 818-710-6306. If you're looking for something that's both exciting and culturally enriching, sign on for the latest City Race. This Saturday, explore the secrets of Little Tokyo. In City Race: Urban Adventure Hunts, teams of two to four players solve challenging clues leading them on a three-hour hunt through one of LA's diverse neighborhoods. It's a great way to learn about Little Tokyo's innovative architecture, traditional temples, and vibrant culture, even as you compete to win the contest. Check-in begins at 9:30 AM at the Japanese-American Cultural Community Center. For more information on City Race and the admission fee, call 310-360-6950. Do you know about Grand Park's Sunday Sessions? Joined with fellow Angelenos in LA's newest green space for an afternoon of electronic music performances, featuring a wide variety of local and international DJs in a celebration that lasts into the evening. This week, it's the Scissor and Thread Showcase with Frances Harris, Bob Moses, and Brian Eduardo Castillo. Grand Park is located at the corner of Grand and First Street in downtown Los Angeles. For more information about the Sunday Sessions, visit grandparkla.org. And that's a look at some upcoming Things to Do. South African anti-apartheid leader Nelson Mandela reached a milestone this month, his 95th birthday. Several community events were held to celebrate, and I had a chance to attend one of them. The rhythm of the music and the bright, colorful costumes delight the crowd as part of a celebration in honor of Nelson Mandela's 95th birthday. For many, Mandela's birthday has a special meaning.
For me, it's hope, and it's the human will to fight and to live on.
The event was held at La Mert Park, where a number of celebrities and officials came out to pay tribute to a true leader.
I believe Mandela is a master teacher. He taught us unconditional love and forgiveness, which is the two main things God wants us to remember.
Many people who came out to the event said Mandela was a big influence in their own lives because he stood up for freedom and equality.
He stood up for a long, long time, and so I'm in the entertainment business, and he's one of my inspirations.
Now, this celebration is one of four separate events put on by Congresswoman Maxine Waters to celebrate the life of an extraordinary man.
He's a man that inspired us all and helped us to feel better about ourselves because we reached out to help people who were living under this unconscionable system of apartheid.
As a result of his struggle against apartheid, Mandela spent 27 years in a South African prison, emerging to serve as president of South Africa. And for this community, it was an opportunity to show their appreciation. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Yana Kay in for Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Good morning. Today is Wednesday, July 24th. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM in the John Ferraro Council Chambers. Our meetings are broadcast live on Channel 35, can also be viewed on the City Council's website at lacity.org. I believe we have a quorum, Mr. Clerk. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield, Bonn, Busciano, Sidio, Englander, Fuentes, Huizar, Coretts, Krikorian, Labonge, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson. 11 members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Great, thank you, Mr. Clerk. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Blumenfeld moves. Councilmember Bonn in seconds. Next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember O'Farrell moves. Councilmember Parks seconds.
Mr. President, there is a request from the Office of Finance to receive and file Item 1A inasmuch as the taxpayer, Property ID Corporation, has resolved its outstanding liability. It should further be noted that the subject taxpayer was incorrectly identified as Hazards Disclosure Company on today's agenda. Further, there are requests from members to continue Item 20 to August 7 and Item 29 to August 13.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the action?
Very good, sir. Items 1B through 18 are items noticed for public hearing. For Items 2, 8, and 10, no majority protest was found to exist, and the proposed establishments may be authorized.
Okay, do we have any cards on those?
Mr. President, we currently have cards on Item 8 only.
Okay, we'll go ahead and hold. We'll just go ahead and take Item 8. Do we have any cards for public comment? General public comment?
Yes, sir, we do. Yes, sir, we do.
Fourth with, please. Item 2, fourth with. Two, fourth with, without objection. That'll be the action. As soon as we actually take up the vote on that item, Mr. Weezer, we can do that. Okay, let's go ahead and take the... Members, do we have any specials on 1 through 18? Seeing none, if we could open the... Do we have any cards on... We had cards on one item.
Item 8, sir.
We'll hold Item 8 for cards. We'll go ahead and take up the rest of those items. If we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And, Mr. President, for clarification, the ordinances will go over one week unless reconsidered later for 12 members.
Great, thank you.
Mr. President, Items 19 through 27 are items for which public hearings have been held. For Items 25, 26, and 27, the TCT reports have been circulated and are now before the members for consideration.
Okay, members, do we have any specials? Items 21 and 22 for Mr. O'Farrell. Those will be held on the desk. Any other specials? Members, if we can open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. President, Items 28 through 43 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, those items are before us. Do we have any cards on those items?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on Items 28, 32, 37, 38, and 43.
Any others? We'll go ahead and hold those items. On any other items, members, do we have any specials? Mr. Caress?
Oh, I wanted to pull 37 and 38, but they're already... So that's fine.
Yeah, we have those as cards, and we have those as specials for Mr. Caress. Any other items as specials? If we can open the roll on the remaining items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Parks?
Can we have a fourth with on 40?
Fourth with on 40 without objection?
Very good. And again, for clarification, the... Those items that do have ordinances will go over one week for a second read unless reconsidered later with 12 members.
Great, thank you. Where does that take us, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, Item 44 is an item scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold it on the desk?
We'll go ahead and hold that on the desk. As Mr. Kocorian is not in yet to ask him... Okay, go ahead and hold that for now.
Very good, sir. Mr. President, that takes Council back to presentations.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues in public. It's my great pleasure today to introduce you to a group of students who are part of an amazing program called Helping Young People Excel Los Angeles, or Hype for short. It is because of the educational opportunities that many of us had here today that we know we were able to go on to our professional careers. But for many of our young people in the city of Los Angeles who come from low-income areas, they faced many challenges and struggles. And these young people here show us that no matter where you come from in the city of Los Angeles, all is possible if given the right resources, high expectations, and opportunities. Hype is a nonprofit organization that was started by young L.A. USD teachers working in mid-city Los Angeles, including my current staffer and downtown director, Sir Hernandez. These teachers saw so much potential in so many of their students that they felt it was necessary and their duty to commit whatever it took to make sure these students went on and succeeded. They worked hard and got three of their students full rides at some of the best private high schools in the city, including Harvard-Westlake, Brentwood, and Crossroads Schools. Five years later, with those original students accepted to schools like Georgetown, MIT, Caltech, UC Berkeley, USC, and others, Hype now provides many more talented low-income students across the city with the guidance and resources to get into and succeed at independent college prep high schools here in Los Angeles. These students who are here with me today are some of the Hype examples in class of 2013. They come from all parts of the city, and these incoming seventh graders have been identified as some of the most talented students in their schools and have been selected to be part of Hype, which is a very prestigious honor indeed. Let's give them all a big round of applause. We are joined today by Rachel Torre, the Director of Programming. And my director, Sir Hernandez, could not be here today. She is returning from Africa, and her flight was delayed. But I wanted to thank them for the work they do. And to show the extent of where these students come from, we have students from Markham Middle School and St. Lawrence de Brusciendi from the Grade 15th District. We have students from Burt Corona Charter School and Baller Academy from the Grade 6 District. We have students from Camino Nuevo Charter School and Monsignor Oscar Romero Charter School from the Grade 1st District. We have students from Johnny Cochran Middle School from the Grade 10th District. We have students from Vista Middle School from the Grade 11th District. And last but not least, we definitely have students from Hollenbach Middle School, Myal Ramouda, from the Grade 14th District. As Hype scholars, these students will be prepared both academically and socially over the next two years to gain full rights scholarships to some of the best independent high schools in the city. After they are admitted to these schools, Hype continues to support them all throughout high school to make sure they succeed there and beyond. And every year, as part of their seven-week summer prep program, they visit City Hall to learn about city government, ask questions, and hopefully meet some of their elected officials. In fact, I think these scholars have written to some of you already sitting at the horseshoe. This is Hype's third annual trip to City Hall, and I just want to recognize them today, congratulate them, and encourage them to continue doing the work they're doing. They have a lot of promise, and one of these days, young students, you may be sitting up here in the horseshoe as well. Let's give them a big round of applause for that, yes. But I'm sure these council members want you to wait until they finish their terms. So with that, thank you, Hype, for the work you do. And now, we're going to hear from one of our students, Ariana Garcia.
Hi, my name is Ariana Garcia. I attend Baller Academy Charter School, and I go to this program called Hype. Hype is a program where they help students like us get into the best private schools in Los Angeles, like Brentwood and Harvard-Westlake. So for this year, we have been to many places like Santa Monica Pier and LACMA. We have tried many new things, like Ethiopian food, and later today, we are going to eat sushi. Hype has exposed us to a lot of new things and pushes us academically. In class, we have been doing a lot of work, like geometry, reading to Kill a Mockingbird, and preparing for the IC. The IC is a test that is mandatory to take before entering any private school. I'm really excited to see what the future holds for us. Thank you for inviting us here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Ariana. And again, council members, these are students from throughout the city, from some of your districts. And again, these are examples of students that, no matter where you come from in the city of Los Angeles, all is possible. And they're only seventh graders. They have a lot of potential. And Ariana, if you could accept this on behalf of the city of Los Angeles to Hype for all the wonderful work you do. Congratulations and much success.
All right, let's hear it for Hype. Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. Congratulations to the seventh graders from Mr. Hype. All right, Mr. Clerk, where does that take us? We'll go ahead and take Items that have been called special? We'll take some of the general public comment cards. We'll go through some of those while we're putting the rest of them together. So we have a few card for general public comment. John Walsh, followed by Arnold Sacks.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or go to JWalshConfidential, or just blog John Walsh. And I come up before America's Most Wanted. This is a great day. We are gender-integrating the government of Los Angeles. And I am so happy that the candidate who won, who incidentally will also be the shortest member of the City Council in many, many years, but she thinks tall, and that's Nuri Martinez, who incidentally, her opponent, Cindy Montañez, threw mud at her and said she was soft as an L.A. USD member on child molesters. And the voters splattered Ms. Montañez with the dirt. Because then, Nuri Martinez got up, as you know, and said that she had never mentioned before that she herself had been a victim of child abuse, not by anybody, any family member, anyone close, but by a stranger. So now, this boys' club has been integrated. Stay tuned today, because the Wi-Fi system in this city is the worst. I can't get on Wi-Fi. The government website of Los Angeles, try to get on it, is the worst website in America. Do you see anybody up there accountable? It is a disgrace. And maybe instead of self-nauseating self-congratulations, which we see, maybe Nuri Martinez, who I remember spoke on the public comment here about a year ago, maybe she'll add something.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Two things. A bit of information for the public. This is from an item from a previous agenda from 41613. It was Item Number 18, and it's Council File Number 1297S3. And it's a Transportation Committee report relative to establishing regulatory requirements for installing bicycle-sharing infrastructure in the public right-of-way, parentheses, sidewalks. And the reason I bring that up is because you'll hear a lot of information about different funds that the Council has available for "sidewalk improvement." And they mention it as sidewalk improvement, but they don't mention it as public right-of-way improvement. And so, there was a story in the newspaper a couple days ago, maybe a week ago, about how they're going to upgrade the general plan for the city that's almost 40 years old. So my suggestion for neighborhood councils and people who are concerned about the repairs of their right-of-way, to go back and look at the literature, go back and look at some definitions of exactly what is considered a sidewalk in reference to what is considered the right-of-way. And you may be surprised, because if the Council can make this kind of documentation available to the public, then when they're talking about sidewalk repair, they're not necessarily talking about sidewalk repair. That being said, unfortunately, I run out of time, but just so you know, there was another article regarding elections, how Steve Lopez interviewed Brian Darcy from the DWP. One of the two stories that were very interesting in the election. I'll talk about that on Friday.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, before we take more items, we have 12 members present. Can we reconsider the items for ordinances, please?
Yes, sir. Those items for reconsideration would be Items 2 through 7, 9 through 14, and Number 19.
Great, thank you. If we can open the roll, close the roll on those items, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And, Mr. President, those matters are now before you for a vote.
Okay, if we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Great, thank you. We'll go back to general public comment. Dr. Tom Williams, followed by Daniel Jones, followed by Omar Baldwin.
Good morning. Dr. Tom Williams from L.A. 32 Neighborhood Council and 30-year owner-occupant in El Serena. Great place. We're having a problem. It's going to be called the Soto Armageddon. We don't know yet. But we have an issue where the community has a problem with a new L.A. DOT project. They're going to close down Huntington Drive and Soto and Mission at the confluence, the intersection of those three major arterials. So far, an award of contract has been made, but we don't know when it's even going to start, or if it's going to start, when it's going to start, how much it's going to start. So we're trying to get L.A. DOT and the Bureau of Engineering to tell us what's going to happen to our community. There are people that live within 50 feet of a heavy construction site. This is going to be a nightmare. But so far, CD14, Bureau of Engineering people are trying to set up a meeting, but they don't give the Neighborhood Council timely notice of it. We don't know what's going to happen in it. So we're quite concerned about the Soto Street Bridge demolition and intersection renovation. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
My name is Daniel Jones.
We don't have a card on you.
Yes, you do. You just called my name out.
Okay. Oh, yes, we've got one here. Please, go ahead.
I'd like nine seconds back of my time. Start it over, please.
You can begin anytime, sir.
Thank you.
This is for every citizen...
Your clock is running.
...in person in the city of Los Angeles who do not have a mayor. City Clerk, I'm going to cite, and then I'm going to incite... Well, let me incite first. There comes a time when silence is betrayal, Dr. Martin Luther King. A patriot must always be ready to defend his country against his government. He must not be confused with dissent, with disloyalty. When the loyal opposition dies, I think the soul of America dies with it. Edward R. Murrow. Mayor-elect Garcetti destroyed Article 14, Section 3, himself. He is disbarred, disbanded. He needs to be repatriated by an act of Congress in order to take the oath, which he failed to do. You were all witness to that overt act. The Supreme Court of the United States of America, three weeks ago, removed all of our rights to use the Fifth Amendment as a right to remain silent. My father said anybody who uses the right, or in any format of it, is guilty. I applaud the Supreme Court, because I will be back. You know what I'm driving at? You have a mayor-elect. Deal with it, or I will cite U.S. Code, Section 10, U.S. Code Title 10, Section 333, Section 3. That's the same section that Martin Luther King used to use the federal government to disband the hypocrites in the South. This will be dealt with. Please take my advice.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Baldwin?
Hello, my name is Omar Baldwin. I'm a peace advocate. I'm an author. I'm a student. And today, I just want to present myself to you guys. I have created a peace democracy. It's a way to solve a lot of our community problems, our national problems, and our global problems, problems such as the economy, healthcare, housing, for like 300... problems, problems such as the economy, healthcare, housing for 300% of our citizens, food all around the world, stop the wars and stuff like that. And the way I decided to do this is by creating an economic-free society, economic-free democracy. I call it a peace democracy. I have written a book about it. I'm still working on it right now. I'm working with the Peace Police Corporation. I'm working with some youth organizations, some youth ministries. I'm working with some churches. I'm working with a lot of people. And I'm trying to put together a proposal to probably get something from the city that can help move us forward for peace. And peace is, it sounds kind of cliché, but it's like, it's just like everybody getting along and caring for one another and just sharing a lot of stuff and not really thinking so hard about everything. I mean, we came up with a society with money for a reason, you know. Probably, I think it was for trading, a lot of stuff, you know, some resources. So I decided to put together a society without money and see how that would be ran and see what kind of peace we can get with that. So that's what I'm working on right now. And I've been talking with the mayor. He told me to start getting to know you guys. So, all right, thanks.
Great, thank you. We'll go ahead. Having no other public comment cards, we'll keep public comment open at this point. Go ahead, take item 8.
Mr. President, item 8 was a matter called Special for Cards.
Have one card, John Walsh.
And for the record, the public hearing was closed on the assessment matter on this item yesterday, but because of its placement on the agenda, the public comment is being allowed pursuant to the Brown Act.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org.
We have one minute on this item. Thank you.
Hold it. Stop, stop. Are you ready? Am I speaking?
Go ahead.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns business improvement districts. I used to be dead-set against these until the crack dealers at Yucca and Argyle took over this huge glass building, and the LAPD didn't do a damn thing. I went to the BID, which my landlord passes the tariff of the BID on to me, which he has a right to do. The BID came in, retired cops, went to the LAPD, kicked them in the ass, and they cleaned it out and boarded it up in 24 hours after asking the LAPD, and I'm not saying anybody was in on the take. I don't know. But I just want to say, you folks out there, the BID is not corrupt. LAPD, who knows?
Okay, that'll conclude the cards for item 8. Members, no questions. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and take item 37.
Mr. President, that was called Special for Cards, and Councilmember Coretts.
Okay, we'll take the card first. Mr. Walsh?
Pass.
We'll pass, okay. Mr. Coretts, item 37.
Yes, this is just asking support for SB 396, which is a measure by Lonny Hancock that would prohibit the possession of any ammunition magazine that is capable of holding more than 10 rounds, and amends the definition of large-capacity magazine. We all know the terrible events that have occurred in the recent past and a very inadequate response at the federal level. So we need to continue doing what we can at the state level, where we've shown great leadership in the last couple decades. And I ask for your aye vote on this motion, which will continue in that correct direction.
Okay, seeing no other comments, Mr. Corrigan.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just wanted to add my support for this important bill. This bill is very, very similar, in fact, almost identical, to the ordinance that this council had approved to ban possession of high-capacity magazines just recently. And so I'm very pleased that Sacramento is acting on this important issue. It's a loophole in the law that has festered for too long. We need to get these high-capacity magazines off our streets, so I ask for your aye vote.
Great, thank you. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll on this item, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Great, thank you. Mr. Sacks, we actually have a card misfiled that was on item 8 from you. We can go ahead and reconsider that item if you do wish to speak. Did you want to speak on that item? Okay, we'll ask the council to reconsider that item if we can. Mr. Fuentes.
Mr. President, my apologies, but I wanted to take a real quick moment and acknowledge the kids, the youth from Project Grad, Los Angeles. It's a college readiness program that does intensive outreach to the community. And I'm so honored to have alum from Pacoima Junior High School, by the way, which is where I went, go Pacoima Panthers, and McClay Middle School. Please give them a big round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to reconsider item 8 if we, without objection. I believe we have to take a vote on that for reconsideration. Without objection, we're fine. So, Mr. Sacks, if you want to say any words on item 8, please.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. And just very quickly, the previous speaker mentioned the discussion about the BID. He's absolutely right. The BID is not necessarily corrupt, but it's not about the BID. It's actually about the agreement between the group that is running the BID, the nonprofit that is recognized by the city clerk's office that oversees the Business Improvement District. In this case, it's the Historic Downtown Los Angeles Incorporated that oversees the Historic Downtown Los Angeles Property and Business Improvement District. Again, notice the little difference between the titles of the two subjects of this item on the agenda, like "right-of-way" and "sidewalks." A little difference, but just enough. The point that I'm trying to make is these nonprofits, and if you've heard or read in the newspaper about the IRS and its discussion about nonprofits, something's a little shady. Be very concerned, because that's where the lobbyist money is. Nonprofits don't have an agenda. They don't have meetings that are open to the public. They don't have to have an agenda, and they don't have to have meetings that are open to the public. That's why you have lobbyists to take over these nonprofits and run these BIDs. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Seeing no other cards on that item? Nobody on the queue? If we can open the roll again on that? Close the roll and tabulate the vote?
13 ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Schweizer.
Fourth with, please.
Without objection. Mr. Clerk, what does that take us?
Mr. President, that takes us to item 43, called Special for Cards.
Okay, we'll go ahead. We were holding that for, I believe, there was an amendment being circulated. Was that amendment circulated?
No, sir, not for 43.
Okay, we'll go ahead and continue to hold 43.
32, called Special for Cards.
We'll go ahead and take item 32 for cards. Let me grab the card. John Walsh? He's no longer in the building? Oh, he's making his way now? Come on down.
Hey, I'm pretty fast with 70 years old.
Yes, you are.
You want me faster? Okay. This concerns disaster preparedness. Let me tell you, this city is not prepared for disaster. Take MacArthur Park. Between MacArthur Park Lake, this is concerned, and there's cement on the bottom of that, built by Ron Tudor, of about 12 inches, and below that are the subway tunnels. In a big earthquake...
This is not on that item. If you could keep it specifically on the Preparedness Grant.
Disaster housing project. Those people who live near the park, when there is an earthquake, I'm going to just take one minute, but remember, I've never been wrong now. And when the earthquake comes and this city is out of control, remember, you were warned. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Great, thank you. Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you again. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. This is a grant, $71,000. Just as an example, what $71,000 could get you. It wouldn't pay for one of the retirement ceremonies that was held in city council for some of the outgoing councilmen that were last month. That's what $71,000 will not get you. But again, this catastrophe Preparedness Grant Program, I'd just like to say what happened with the demonstrations that occurred in the city last week, how the city was unprepared to be in several different locations for roving bands of violence.
Mr. President, he is not talking about this item.
I'm talking about catastrophe Preparedness Grant Program. It's a regional catastrophe Preparedness Grant Program. And you're focusing on housing. And housing is but a portion of the regional catastrophe Preparedness Program. Communications, how would you get people to get to the housing if you don't have a communication system that works properly? How will you have a problem with intercommunication between the fire department of the city and the fire department of the county? How will you have an opportunity to use the housing if you have improper communications? Do you have regional assistance from the neighborhood councils? Are they involved in this? Don't know.
Great, thank you. Why don't you stay right there? We'll go ahead and take up the next item in a second as well. So on this item, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
We'll go ahead and take the next item, number 38, please.
I don't have 38, sir. I don't have a card on 38.
You have a card on 38.
No, I don't have a card on 38.
Oh, I'm sorry. This was, no, John Walsh does. Pass, okay. And, Mr. Coretts, did you want to speak on item 38 as well?
Yes, this item is by Daryl Steinberg, is just a way to close a loophole. Right now, we have one of the strongest bans, if not the strongest, on assault weapons, but manufacturers are producing similar weapons that are just as dangerous, but technically are legal, so this closes that loophole and puts them essentially in the same category as assault weapons and protects us from those being on our streets.
Okay, seeing no other members on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll on that item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
And, Mr. Clerk, I believe on item 44, Mr. Corrigan does not wish to go into closed session. We can go ahead and take that item unless any members have any questions. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll.
Excuse me, sir. Before doing so, in the case entitled Ken Liu and Tim Nambo versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $500,000 in settlement.
Mr. Corrigan, you're okay with that?
I made your aye vote.
Yes, okay. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that takes us, I believe, to items 21 and 22. So we're going to go ahead and take those items together. And we'll have 10 minutes for, we're going to split this up. We have a lot of cards on this, and there's a lot of interest. I believe that's what most people are here for today on the Millennium Projects. We'll go ahead and do 10 minutes on the cards so far on the support, 10 minutes on the opposition, 10 minutes for each of the appellants. There's two appellants. Another 10 minutes from the applicant, and we'll go ahead and open it in that order.
And, Mr. President, for the record, amending motion 21A, Oferal Coretts has been circulated.
Okay, if we can open the clock for 10 minutes, and these are the supporters, we'll open it up with the supporters first for the proposal. First, Scott Campbell. And if you could line up, I'm going to ask everybody, since you only have, before we started off, 10 minutes on each section, if you will, for public comment and speakers. We've had numerous public comment on this already in committee, in the Plumb Committee. And so we'll ask, you don't have to use all of your time if you want to make a point. We're going to do one minute for each speaker, but we certainly still will not get through the entire stack. And so with that, we want everybody to have the opportunity to be heard. So if you can keep your comments brief, if somebody's already made a point that you also want to share, and you've already heard that point, if you have something fresh or new to say, please do that. You can certainly say that you echo one of the previous speakers. But we do want to get an opportunity to have as many speakers as possible. And so with that, if you can keep that in mind, we will call three cards at a time so you can line up behind each other, and we can be as efficient as possible, since I know many of you are taking time off of work as well. With that, we'll have Scott Campbell, followed by Ed Hunt, followed by Laron Gubler. Please.
Great. Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Scott Campbell. I'm president of Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council, representing over 20,000 stakeholders immediately south of this project. And first, I'd like to congratulate all of the recently elected and re-elected members of this body. Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council voted to support this project at its original height after many years of working directly with the developer. We recognize the transformative power of this project and the benefits to our community, including bringing jobs closer to people, bringing people closer to jobs, utilizing existing transit at Hollywood &amp; Vine, which I took today, and the benefits package, which I've been provided and I know has been provided to you. I and the Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council Board ask you to approve this project and allow Hollywood to maintain and improve its position as a premier destination for people from across the city, across our state, across our country, and across the world. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Hunt.
I'm Edward Hunt. I'm a 35-year resident of Hollywood, president of the Melrose Hill Neighborhood Association, and just wanted to say that here we finally have a true transit-oriented, pedestrian-friendly, mixed-use project that's literally less than 500 feet from a subway stop, and I recommend its approval without reservation. Thank you.
All right, now, thank you.
Good morning. I'm Laron Gubler, president and CEO of the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, commenting here on support of this project. For decades, the city has discussed the need to do real planning, and today, the city council has an opportunity to do exactly that by approving a project that takes literally acres of unsightly urban parking lots and transforms them into a transit-oriented, pedestrian-friendly development with a diverse mix of living, working, shopping, dining, and recreation activities. This is a signature project that will redefine the Hollywood of the 21st century as an exciting, livable, walkable community. It represents the very best of urban planning and urban design. You know, the decision, the decision to make a truly urban density and to build in Hollywood in the core was made really 25 years ago when Metro approved, when Metro approved the subway to Hollywood.
Great, thank you.
So let's approve this project for Hollywood.
Thank you. The next speakers will be Ron Miller, followed by Alfredo Hernandez, followed by Priscilla Chang. Chang. And forgive me, I'm reading writing that, hopefully I'll get some of these right. If I don't get them right, please just feel free to correct me. Morning.
Morning. I'm Ron Miller. I'm Executive Secretary of the Los Angeles Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council. We represent 140,000 craftsmen and women across 52 affiliated local unions and 14 trades. We support the Millennium Project. We urge you to approve it today. It will make a Hollywood a livable community for the residents with easy access to public transit. Mayor Garcetti and Councilman O'Farrell have worked with current residents to create a project that benefits the community. With $664 million investment, it's gonna create 2,900 construction jobs, and it's gonna be built under an all-union project labor agreement. These jobs are part of careers into our apprenticeship program. Please support it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Morning.
Morning, councilmembers. My name's Alfredo Hernandez. I work for the Friends of the Hollywood Central Park, and I'm a board member of the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council. This is a very, very excellent developer. He has met numerous, numerous times with the community and has provided many community benefits, and I urge you to support them, and they will, you know, I also recommend that all the Quimby fees generated by this project be used towards the Hollywood Central Park. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Priscilla Chang, and I'm the Economic Development Director for the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor. I'm here today on behalf of Maria Elena Trazo and the hundreds of thousands of workers throughout Los Angeles County. This project is a good one, create good union jobs, over 3,000 good union jobs, and 1,300 good permanent jobs, and an excellent training program. As we enter a new administration and new council, one of the big things that we committed to voters is that we'd create good jobs, and this is our opportunity. So we ask that you support this project today. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Mora, Maria Johnson, followed by Victor De La Cruz, followed by Eric Anthony. Whoever makes it to the mic first, feel free.
Good morning, and thank you. My name is John Tronson. I'm here to speak on behalf of the project. Just as a reference, I own a couple of historic buildings in Hollywood. I do have a passion for preserving historic buildings. I also own a loft at the Broadway Loft, which is around the corner of Hollywood &amp; Vine, and my unit stairs right out of the Capitol Records Building, and so I know a lot about the project. I do think one of the buildings is gonna block my view of the Hollywood sign and obviously have an impact on that historic building, but I just think it's a wonderful project. I know it's big, but I think the community plan calls for heavy density in this area around transit portals, and I support that as well, and I just think it's a really well-designed project that I urge you to support. Thank you.
Great, now, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, councilmembers. Victor De La Cruz, Manat Phelps &amp; Phillips, I'm Land Use Council for AMDA College and Conservatory of the Performing Arts. AMDA's Hollywood campus, which is immediately adjacent to the Millennium Project site, has educated some of the world's most talented singers, dancers, and actors for years. With approximately 700 full-time students using the eight buildings that comprise AMDA's campus each day, some of which would share a property line or are directly across the street from Millennium, AMDA was initially very concerned about how construction would impact the school's operations. Today, we are very pleased to be here in full support of the project. Millennium has risen to the occasion by listening and working closely with us to ensure that AMDA will not only be able to operate, but thrive during construction. Those issues resolved, AMDA believes that students deserve a neighborhood with great architecture, public spaces, and a mix of uses that will activate sidewalks and provide for a safe, vibrant environment. We look forward to the new environment that this transformative project will create, not only for AMDA, but for all of Hollywood. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good morning, councilmen. My name is Eric Anthony, and I'm here on behalf of the Los Angeles Business Council. We represent over 350 business leaders, commercial property owners, developers, and other stakeholders, and I'm here today in support of the Millennium Hollywood Project. This project is of vital importance, not just to the Hollywood community, but to all of Los Angeles, which will see the economic benefits from this development for years to come. Millennium Hollywood will provide transportation options, reduce urban sprawl, and decrease our heavy reliance on cars. This is a well-planned, high-density project adjacent to the transit hubs that makes sense and is consistent with the goals of the LABC. I urge you to support this project as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ruben Gonzalez, followed by Rachel Torres, followed by Terry Tilton. Please just start making your way up, that'd be great. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the council. My name is Ruben Gonzalez. I'm here on behalf of the LA Area Chamber of Commerce and our 1,600 members employing over 700,000 Angelenos. Today is the, one of the easiest votes of this young council's term. The community is in favor, business is in favor, labor is in favor. This creates jobs and puts hundreds of millions of dollars into our economy. This is an easy yes vote, and I will look forward to seeing a positive result here, and want to thank Councilman O'Farrell for bringing this across the finish line. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
I urge all of you to please vote yes for this project. It's vital for Hollywood, it's vital for our community on so many levels that have been stated. I'm a 30-year, over 30-year resident of Hollywood. I work in Hollywood. I'm on the Board of Directors for Hollywood Pal and also working with the Hollywood Central Park Project. The Millennium Project is essential for our revitalization. Please vote yes.
Great, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Rachel Torres. I'm a research analyst with Unite Here Local 11. On behalf of my colleagues and 20,000 members of Unite Here Local 11, we wish to express our strong support for the Millennium Hollywood Project. This project continues a strong precedent of responsible development in Hollywood, beginning with the Hollywood &amp; Highland Project. This project will receive no city dollars nor is it on city land, yet thousands of good jobs will be produced for the construction and permanent employees. We want to express our strong support for this project, thank this council for your due diligence in making this work, and vote in favor of the project. Thank you so much.
Great, now, thank you very much. Terry Tilton. No longer here. Okay. Raul Munoz, followed by Kelly Cole, followed by Gary Cook. Morning.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Kelly Cole, and I just, I support the Millennium Park Project because I think it's gonna create a lot of new jobs and a lot of new opportunities for people in, especially Hollywood, that it needs a park. It needs something new to revive it, so I'm looking forward to it happening.
Great, thank you very much. Gary Cook. Not present. Raul Munoz, it's the second time I've called. Followed by Kevin Parvi, followed by Martin Rodriguez. Good morning.
Good morning. Gary Cook, UA Plumbers Local 78. We stand in support of this project, building the community, the infrastructure around it. It's a good project. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Raul Munoz, and I'm here to support Hollywood Millennium because we need restaurants, retail store, to jobs for our community. In the last past two, three years, we have a lot of buildings, but this is studios, and there's not a job for our communities. This is outside job welcome, and I wanna stand in Hollywood Millennium welcome too. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Actually, that wraps up, I believe, the 10 minutes. The remaining cards will be kept for the record, and they'll all be part of the actual record. And then we'll go ahead and switch to another 10 minutes for the opponents. And again, if you can line up at least three at a time, we'll start off with Jim Dustin, followed by Jamie McNarly, or Jim Duzen is what the card says, one of the two, followed by Alex Chavez.
Good morning. My name is Jim Van Duzen. I'm a member of the Board of the Hollywood United Neighborhood Council and co-chair of the Plum Committee, representing 19,000 Hollywood stakeholders and the geographic area of this project. We have many concerns about this project. Among them are, one is a project without a plan. There's outside parameters with no detail. No one in your committee or in the planning department has the idea of exactly what Millennium is going to build. Hunkers on record with opposing a 6:1 floor area ratios of a far out strip to a building area and infrastructure, and is inconsistent with the spirit and goals of Hollywood community plan. Caltrans said the Millennium sponsored traffic study is flawed and does not address the original impact of the project. We request a regional traffic study and traffic management plan. Your urge to support elegant density with a 4.5:1 floor area ratio. Thank you.
Now, thank you. The clock is going on the 10 minutes, so if you could make your way anytime. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jamie McNary from the Hollywood Land Homeowners Association, and we oppose this project. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Alex Chavez, not present. Joanne D'Antonio, followed by Michael Morrow.
I'm Joanne D'Antonio, and the Millennium Project will create a traffic mess in Hollywood, which will be bad for business and be bad for tourists. I won't focus on the inconvenience to residents of the area because they are not usually the consideration, but it will affect the quality of life. Millennium will also interfere with the historical area. Hollywood is valuable to Los Angeles as preserved. If people want brand-new glitz, they can go to L.A. Live. Think Pasadena and how it has kept building height limited and restored old buildings. And Pasadena's not suffering as a business area. The traffic is not unbearable, and it's fun to go there. Just because there's a subway stop doesn't mean we have to turn an area into Manhattan. Our subway does not deliver everyone to walking distance of their destination, so there will always be cars. Plus, the latest DIRs say that the buildings will straddle an earthquake fault.
Great, thank you.
Although I've worked in the area as an attendance counselor, I don't speak for the L.A. Unified School District, and although my grandfather was a professor of architecture-
If you could state your name for the record as well, please.
At USC, I am Michael Morrow, doctorate in educational administration. I'm concerned about this project, these towers, about the increasing traffic. It is approaching gridlock, and you need to do something about that. I'm also concerned about the potential problem with the earthquake fault underneath. Have you, will you consider warning everybody who lives and works along this area, or even condemning properties? I think you have an opportunity to create a couple of tax advantages, or encourage that, for a couple of pocket parks. Please vote no on this project right now, or at least wait until all the seismic reports are in. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Great, thank you. Sarah Jean Schwartz, followed by Joyce Director, followed by Ms. Fortune Zuckerman. Can you hear me now? Yes, if we could, if we could just keep the voices down on the sides of the chambers, it is a bit of an echo chamber, so that would be helpful. Sarah Jean Schwartz, followed by Ms. Joyce Director, followed by Ms. Fortune Zuckerman. Thank you. Good morning.
Hello, I'm Sarah Jean Schwartz, and I'm on the Board of the Hollywood Land Homeowners Association. All ayes this morning are on Hollywood's new lawmaker to see how he handles this first test of his leadership. So far, his position has been a mystery. Will the new Hollywood councilman stand with 40 community groups citywide that oppose the project, or with the New York City developer and his band of high-paid lobbyists? Will he join and support development that is safe, sane, and appropriate, or will he support this project? Will he represent the people that will be most affected by this project, the residents of Hollywood? First impressions are often lasting impressions, if unfavorable, hard to shake. What happens if Hollywood councilmen votes for this project and God forbid there's a tragic earthquake? This is your day, your opportunity to save Hollywood. Thank you.
Now, great, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Joyce Director. I'm on the Board of Hollywood Heights. I'm also on the Board of the Hollywood Hills West Neighborhood Council. I'm on the Hollywood Bowl Advisory Committee. I'm very active in the community, and I need to remind this council that you represent all of the people of Los Angeles and not just one very wealthy builder. Over 50 local civic associations, representing thousands of Angelenos, have come out against the Millennium as presented. Millennium's offered to lower the height of the buildings while maintaining the same square footage was a ploy we all knew was coming from the start. They proposed something they knew would never fly and then fell back to Plan B, which was always their Plan A. They have conceded nothing. The traffic, earthquake, and safety studies Millennium has provided have all been proven to be questionable at best and criminally liable at worst. I am requesting the City Council to instruct Millennium to go back to the drawing board and present a project more in keeping with the existing height-
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Zuckerman, followed by Julie Fleischer, followed by Shelley Kaya. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Julie Fleischer, TV and Film Script Supervisor, proud union member and Whitley Heights resident. At the Plum Meeting last month, there were three councilmembers present. While we property owners made our case against the Godzilla-sized Millennium Project, Councilman Huizar repeatedly got up, left the room, talking on his cellphone, and was gone for many minutes at a time. The other two councilmen, Reyes and Highlander, were handed a large-bound stack of papers by our lawyer, which outlined our concerns and the newest and accurate seismic findings. The two picked up the study and leafed through with about as much concern as if it were a cartoon flip book they picked up in a Hollywood souvenir shop. If I displayed that kind of unprofessionalism and hubris at my job, I'd be fired. Hopefully, in the time that has passed, council has done its job and has taken into consideration the information given to you by we who have elected you to be our representatives. Please don't continue to be led around by your wallet by those who have financed many of your campaigns as a way to guarantee your support for any monstrosity they wish to build.
Great, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Shelley Kaya, and I've been a homeowner in Whitley Heights, Hollywood, for the last 15 years. I'm all for the regentrification of Hollywood, but not a project of this magnitude. Over 40 homeowners associations, neighborhood councils, community groups have all been vocal in their opposition to this project. Caltrans, a state agency, has expressed its concerns about safety and the impact on the 101 freeway. We've expressed our grievances in every way possible, and you don't hear us. My question is, who do you listen to? We pay your salaries, they contribute to your campaigns. We'll see you at the polls next election day.
Great, thank you. Jim Gagan, followed by Valerie Keegan.
Jim Gagan, Hollywood Hills West Neighborhood Council Chair, Whitley Heights resident, 27 years. If you like the traffic at Hollywood &amp; Highland, if you like to watch Highland jammed up from 4:00 to 8:00 o'clock every day, if you like that, then you're gonna love the Millennium Towers. You're just gonna adore it. It's ridiculous. To build a million point two square feet and say there'll be a little bit more traffic is nonsense. It's ridiculous. We need an independent traffic study. We also need an independent study of the earthquake fault that runs through the site. It's ridiculous. That's all I have to say.
Great, thank you very much. Valerie, followed by Rosemary Demont, followed by Annie Gagan.
Hi, good morning, and I thank you very much for your time and also paying attention to something that is so important. Hollywood is a neighborhood. It's not a downtown. It's downhill. And these residents here really do know what they're talking about. I would also like to bring attention to the revised ordinance that was added to this file. I did attend the Plum Committee hearing, and I never heard anything discussed in that file about hours of operation, what that they're going to have, five liquor licenses, possibly two nightclubs. Was the police notified of this? Normally, we would have some input. There's media cafes, they're going to be open, you know, dancing, oh, well, maybe not in the streets. What about the Pantages Theater? Can they take outdoor amplified music and live concerts until 2:00 in the morning out there? This is a neighborhood. I really do ask that you pay attention. Mr. Bloomfield, I do see that you are paying attention, and I greatly thank you. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This will be our final speaker. As we've actually burned the clock on the 10 minutes, so I just wanted to let you know. Great, thank you. Please. We can, we'll do one more minute. We'll add that then, for the other card. Not a problem.
So what is your rush? Why are you rushing to get this through? You don't have to march this developer's tune, especially when he's asking you to do, to march blindfolded, possibly over a cliff, and make no mistake that he's asking, what he's asking you to do is to vote for this project without having all the facts. And that's just not me. It's Dr. Parrish saying it, warning you that the seismic study is deficient, Caltrans is telling you the traffic study is inadequate. And if you proceed with ignorance and putting lives in danger, will you be able to live with it when the worst should happen? And it will happen? Would you be putting Hollywood's life, quality of life, at jeopardy, and you'll be risking legal jeopardy? And what's the rush again? Think. Don't act until you have all the facts. The law demands it, we demand it. Please, do the right thing for once in your life instead of just listening to a developer's campaign.
Great, thank you. Our final speaker will be Annie Gagan.
Thank you, good morning.
Good morning.
As far as the traffic, Caltrans has written a number of letters to the city and to then Councilmember Garcetti that have all gone ignored, that this is an inadequate traffic study, and it's basically illegal if you vote and pass this today. They have within 30 days to file a lawsuit. The state geologist has said you're building on dangerous active fault line, and you're all ignoring it. Councilmember O'Farrell, Councilmember Huizar, Councilmember Englander, and our current mayor all have been supported and helped get elected by Millennium, and the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce PAC is also supported by Millennium. You are not selling out a city only. You are selling the very lives of the people who live here, putting us in jeopardy and all of the people that come here and visit here. You had a press conference about the safety. We have shootouts in the streets, we have knifings, knifings going on all the time. 6:1 FAR on Vine, this will be 100 times worse than what you're dealing with with the murders and rapes over at Hollywood and Highland. What are you thinking about? You have an opportunity to create a safe city here!
Thank you very much. Now we're going to go ahead and start with the appellants. We'll open it up for 10 minutes for each appellant. We'll start with Mr. Ben Resnick. I don't see Mr. Resnick, or anybody representing the other appellant. So we'll go ahead and close his time, and we'll go with Mr. Robert Silverstein with 10 minutes.
Doug E. Fresh.
Good morning.
Morning, thank you. First of all, since Mr. Resnick is not here, if I may request that his time be added to mine, and I will do my best to speak on more issues.
Unfortunately, we cannot do that. We can give you the 10 minutes, but if he's not here to yield it to you, then we'll go ahead and give you your 10 minutes, though, as we did with the supporters and the appellants.
Okay. There are two appellants here, and I think in terms of due process and given the gravity of the situation and the decisions that are before you today.
This is part of your time, so if you want to.
That are before you today, I would respectfully submit that you should give more time to this, not less, which really raises the issue, what is your rush? My name is Robert Silverstein, and I'm the attorney representing a coalition of more than 40 community groups that have coalesced around this project, against this project because of its outrageousness. Let the record reflect, first of all, that I filed some objections this morning with your city clerk's office, three separate letters. One is to Council President Wesson, one is to your Department of Building and Safety, and another one is to Council President Wesson with some exhibits. We have tried our best to respond to a last-minute document submission by the developer of 311 pages, and I would respectfully submit that that action by the developer and this city council's endorsement of that action is a violation of our due process rights. There is simply no way in the limited amount of time that we've had that an appellant, a land use appellant, which is what we are, can have assimilated that 300 pages of material. What we did notice in our initial review is that they have attempted to sneak in new studies, new data, all of which are similarly false to what they did before. However, the entire purpose of SEQA is that it is a public disclosure document, and SEQA requires that both you as the decision-makers and we as the public have a full and fair opportunity to review and analyze the information that's presented. That has been rendered impossible by that procedure from the developer. And I would respectfully remind you that last August, I won a trial in the Los Angeles County Superior Court against you, the city council, based upon the Hollywood and Gower Project, where the city staff and planning department and you allowed the last-minute introduction of material backfilled into the record, written by the developer, and denied our client, the La Marada Avenue Neighborhood Association of Hollywood's due process rights. And Judge Jones downtown found that the city violated our constitutional rights. A very similar abuse is happening here today, and that is a further ground for you to take a step back and not to vote to approve this project. And I would specifically encourage Councilmember O'Farrell to give this his attention, because this is not only a horrific project, but it's a horrific abuse of the process. What the public wants to see is integrity in the process, and that is sorely lacking. And there are so many examples of that. In the last couple of days, some startling information has come out which further blows the lid off of this project, exposing the danger and fraud surrounding it. First of all, the California State Board of Professional Engineers and Geologists has opened an official investigation into the Millennium developers' geologists. That is in response to our formal complaint that the developers' engineers distorted their technical reports to hide the existence of the Hollywood earthquake fault running directly through this property. We've been claiming, and now the state is investigating, that the Millennium geological engineers have misrepresented the facts about the life, health, safety risks of building skyscrapers on the property at issue in this matter. The state board would not have opened this investigation if they did not believe that there was probable cause to our complaint. They are not required to simply open an investigation. Second, the other dramatic development is that last Saturday, four days ago, the California State Geologist, Dr. Parrish, in a letter written to you, the city council, and Council President Herb Wesson, wrote with specific reference to the EIR in this matter and with specific reference to the Millennium Project, that the California Geological Survey has commenced a detailed study of the Hollywood Fault and its related splays. Dr. Parrish noted that the state's investigation could affect the city's, quote, "reviewing of plans for the prospective Millennium Hollywood project, which may fall within an earthquake fault zone." All independent data shows that it does fall within an earthquake fault zone. More than that, that faults run through that property. Where do we know that from? From the 2010 California Geological Survey's Active Fault Trace Map, which was ignored by the developers' consultants. From Professor Dolan from USC, who has no dog in this hunt, who is the world expert on the Hollywood Fault, his studies. From prior studies, all peer-reviewed independent studies that were suppressed and ignored by the developers' consultants. That is fraud, and your approval or anticipated approval is endorsement and complicity in that fraud. You need to step back and do what a responsible city council would do, which is, Councilman O'Farrell, at a minimum, wait until the state geological survey's investigation is complete. They have said that that's only going to take six months. We're not talking about years or decades. Six months. Instead, what will happen today is you will put the lives of as many as 3,000 persons, including our respected union members, who would work, live, and shop in that giant project, they would be at risk if you approve this project today. These are devastating new developments. These are red flags that should warn the L.A. City Council that it would be irresponsible and possibly criminally negligent for it to approve the Millennium Project as it is now planned. All of this new information must be disclosed to the public in a new draft EIR before the city council votes on it. You cannot take the approach that you seem to be taking with yet a new amended ordinance five minutes before this starts, where you're adding different things or claiming different things, all window dressing, saying that there will be further seismic studies done to your satisfaction. That subverts the entire purpose of SEQA, which is the information needs to be in front of you before you make your decision, not afterwards. If the Department of Fish and Game, if the Department of Fish and Game said to you, "We are investigating, and we have commenced a study of an endangered species on the Millennium Hollywood Project site," and I would respectfully submit that integrity is an endangered species on that site. But if they said that to you, would you still go ahead and ignore it? Ignore the state's study? Ignore their jurisdiction? That is what you are doing. Moreover, for two and a half years, you have ignored Caltrans's jurisdiction. For two and a half years, you have ignored the statements and the directions from Caltrans, which is a responsible agency, which has said that your EIR uses bogus figures and falsifies data and suppresses information about massive impacts to the 101 freeway, to the circulation system, to safety, to emergency response times, to queuing. None of those issues have been addressed to date despite Caltrans's repeated and consistent objections to this EIR. It is unheard of that you have 40 community groups plus six neighborhood councils that have coalesced against this. It is further unheard of that you have at least three state agencies which are now involved saying to you, "City Council and Councilman O'Farrell, please stop. Do the responsible thing. At a minimum, wait for the studies to be complete. Do not ignore what is so crystal clear. Do not rubber stamp this. Do not conduct business as usual. We want to see better. You are our leaders. We expect responsible leadership. We still have a shred of faith in the process. Please, please, don't disappoint us." I know that's a big request, but, you know, hope springs eternal. So we would respectfully request that you defer any decision until after the state's investigation is complete. I would also respectfully suggest that your Building and Safety Department, including Supervisor Chan and your city geologist, Mr. Prevost, have been woefully negligent in their advice to you. They should have advised you to stop and to not accept the geological studies that are underlying and undermining the EIR and your decisions here. I believe when you approve this, if you do, and when everything falls apart, which it will, that there will be a seismic shift within the Building and Safety Department, and that's desperately needed. Because instead of being gatekeepers, they have rubber stamped clearly fraudulent and erroneous studies. And I want to briefly mention, in the few minutes that we had to try to assimilate the new material they've dumped into the record, they claim, the developer, that ZEMIS, the city zoning and information system, is an adequate basis, a legitimate basis, for determining the distance to the earthquake fault. That's a ridiculous statement. There is no basis for that. It's not a geological survey. They also falsely claim that our experts relied on ZEMIS. That is also a misstatement. Our expert referred to ZEMIS when critiquing their experts' reliance on it. Everything that they are saying is twisted, everything that they are saying is misleading, everything that they are saying is dangerous, and you have an obligation to stop this project now.
Thank you. Your time is up, Mr. Silverstein. And with that, thank you for keeping it truly professional as the attorney that you are. And so with that, if we could, open it up for the members. Mr. O'Farrell, if you'd like to begin.
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, I'd like to thank everyone who came to council to express their view on the Millennium Project, and I acknowledge all of you in this process. Second, to my colleagues, I ask that you review the letter I placed on your desks in order to provide each of you with specific details on why, after careful consideration of all the facts, I have decided to support this project. This project is a long time in the making. Many concerns have been raised and addressed throughout the six-year process. The planning process began, as I said, six years ago, and as we move forward with our discussion, I'd like to remind all of you that this is a time limit file. The council must act on it by July 31st or lose jurisdiction. I would like to recognize city planning, city attorney, the Department of Building and Safety, and the Department of Transportation.
If we can keep the public, excuse me, for one second, and not disrupt the meeting, but keep the comments down and be respectful, as everybody was respectful so far. Otherwise, we'll have to clear the chambers. Thank you.
Before I call up the departments? I'd like to recognize the departments and also transportation for your diligent work in this matter. Secondly, I'd like to acknowledge Mayor Garcetti and Councilmember LeBonde for their efforts in this project. Councilmember LeBonde could not be at council today, and he asked me to read a statement from him, which I will do. And this is from Councilmember LeBonde. While I support the jobs that Millennium Project would create, I would not have voted for this project as presented today. I feel the height of the two towers is too tall and out of scale with the character of Hollywood. I'm also concerned about the impact of traffic on adjoining hillside neighborhoods, which I represent. Even though this project is not in my district, I have advocated consistently throughout the public process for a lower height. I would have supported a maximum height of 29 stories. And Councilmember LeBonde thanks me for reading this statement. The Millennium Project will anchor the east side of Hollywood, attracting new visitors, residents, and business to the region. Most importantly, it will create new jobs, and a preference will be given to the City of Los Angeles residents through a strong project labor agreement. I would, before I invite the departments up to answer some questions, I would like to invite Phil Ehrens up to say a few words.
Before we do that, if we could, we're going to go to the applicant. I wanted you to open.
Sure.
And then set the tone, and we'll go ahead and go to the applicant for their 10 minutes. I believe they don't want to use or utilize all of their 10 minutes, and we'll turn it back over to you for the departments and calling up other members.
Okay.
Great, please, thank you. Yes.
And he's being represented by...
And Phil, we'll put it up to you as part of Jerry's 10 minutes as well, if we could.
Yes, absolutely. I'll be brief. Good morning, council members. My name is Philip Ehrens, and I'm a founding partner of Millennium Partners, who with Argent Ventures are the developers of Millennium Hollywood. Thank you so much for the opportunity to discuss our project with you this morning. We spent a long time looking for the right site to build our first development in Los Angeles, and after much time and consideration, we decided we wanted to be in Hollywood. The reasons are many, but the most important considerations to us were that Hollywood is centrally located, easily accessible by mass transit, and home to an amazing history and equally promising future. Capital records and the adjacent surface parking lots on both sides of Vine Street are an ideal location to build a dynamic mixed-use project that pays tribute to the past and points the way to a new future. We set out to design a pedestrian-friendly, transit-oriented development with an emphasis on preservation, good jobs, and I'm so grateful for the union representatives who came out this morning, encouraging both walkability and bike friendliness. Millennium Hollywood, however, is first and foremost a preservation project. And by preservation, I mean both the preservation...
Again, if we could keep it down in the audience, I'm sorry. I'd like everybody to be respectful as we were, and they were, on each of the side of the proponent. of the proponent and the opponent. And now it's the applicant's turn. Thank you.
I mean both the preservation of the Capitol Records Tower, which absolutely is a centerpiece of the project, and the preservation of views of Capitol Records and the Hollywood sign. As the building's architect Lou Nadorf has said, he always expected the property around the site to be developed and is confident that Capitol will be able to hold its own. In enhancing the environment around Capitol Records, we propose to add a complementary mix of uses: a boutique hotel, residences, community-serving retail space, restaurants, and new office space, so that more media companies can work in the entertainment capital of the world. Equally as significant is our dynamic open space that will not just be a respite for both residents and the greater Hollywood community, but a link to all the other amazing open spaces to be created in Hollywood, including the wonderful Hollywood Central Park. Thanks to an extensive input from the community, many of whom are here today, leading stakeholders, the city family, and decision-makers like you, we think we have crafted an outstanding project benefiting Hollywood by providing a gateway that the eastern end of the boulevard has long deserved. Many of our supporters, especially the neighborhood residents, value our community benefit package, the business and labor communities, the numerous economic benefits of Millennium Hollywood, which will bring to the immediate area and the city as a whole, the thousands of jobs it will create during construction and once the project is up and running. Millennium Partners has worked nearly 25 years to bring safe, dynamic, architecturally distinguished projects to urban neighborhoods across the country, ranging from Boston to San Francisco, to the Upper West Side of Manhattan, and to the Georgetown neighborhood of Washington, D.C. With each development, we have worked with local government and neighbors to formulate a unique design and mix of uses that responds to the characteristics of each city and each site. In every case, we have retained control and ownership of the projects we start. Millennium retains to this day a significant financial interest in every urban mixed-use project we have developed since 1991. We're excited that we have the same opportunity here in Hollywood and have spent much of the last seven years becoming a part of the community. With a vote by you today in support of our project, we are eager to take the next step and start work on Millennium Hollywood, which we anticipate could happen within the next year. I'd like to take a moment to address some of the concerns that have been raised. First and foremost, Millennium is committed to safe, sound, responsible development. It is not our interest to develop a project without addressing any and all seismic concerns. We couldn't, and we won't. Secondly, we have worked to address traffic concerns, including those raised by Caltrans, and we believe we have. Finally, we were asked to consider reducing the height of our proposed project, and we did. Hollywood is constantly changing. Development projects on the western edge of the community around Highland have helped make that section of the boulevard a thriving place that is a must-see destination. We want to do something equally exciting around the intersection of Hollywood and Vine, one of the most famous street corners in the world. Our primary focus is on building a place that delivers on the dream of Hollywood for its residents and working community. Millennium Hollywood is that project. It is a foundation for the re-establishment of downtown Hollywood. It is a project that provides a significant economic stimulus for an area where economic revitalization has yet to take hold fully. It is a project that fully addresses its impacts. Hollywood's best days are ahead, and we look forward to helping make that happen with this catalytic project that will not just be a place to live, stay, and work, but a place to shop, eat, and play, a place to enjoy, a place to call the heart of a community. I thank you in advance for your support and the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Newman, we've got four more minutes if you wanted to utilize us, or less.
I'm a pro temp, Englander, member of the council. My name is Jerry Newman, representing Millennium Partners. I would only like to address one single issue that was raised by Mr. Silverstein in his presentation, and that is the provision of additional information that we did to this body and to the city as of yesterday. I want to be clear that we are well aware of the law of Merata case. We are well aware of what the court has determined and would never, ever put you in jeopardy as to any lawsuit that has challenged you in any way. What Mr. Silverstein has attempted to do is cast our response to his multiple letters, nearly 600 pages of information that he has provided you. He's attempted to cast that as new information or means of clarifying or additional findings, all of which were found to be the wrong methodology by the court. What we have done is we have utilized our efforts, and I'm sure Mr. Silverstein would not want to deny us that, to have a good-faith effort at addressing his concerns and providing you the information you needed that support the conclusions in the EIR that address the issues, not in a new way, but in a way that utilizes documents that are already in your record, that shows you the highlights, that allows you to see why the conclusions were reached that they were, not to change your findings, not to add new findings, not to do any of the things that have been violative of due process previously. So let us be clear, that is exactly what we're doing. The new information provided is not new information. It is supportive information for what you already have before you and for the work that you and your departments have done, and I want to be clear about that. So we are not recasting the issue in any other manner. Thank you very much for that attention.
Great, thank you very much. I'll turn it back over to Councilmember Mitchell Farrell.
I just want the chamber to understand that I take any issues raised very seriously, especially in relation to public safety. So having said that, I'd like to call up the departments to answer a few questions. I'd like to invite Building and Safety, if you could come forward, please. Transportation representatives.
Building and Safety, Ray Chan.
Good morning. Dana Prevost, Chief of the Grading Division.
Thank you, gentlemen. If you could, you've just heard the discussion on the possible fault line. It's been said with great certainty that this project is on top of the fault line by the appellants. If you could address that and share how the city is addressing the concerns and respond to the greatest extent that you can in relation to the state geologic survey. It's been raised that there is an investigation. If you could address that, that would be terrific.
Sure. First of all, we pass out a letter that we put together to council related to this particular subject, and I'm going to ask our chief geologist, Dana Prevost, to talk a little bit about how this whole approval of the report happened and how we have talked to the state geologists just yesterday afternoon, and what was his response. So please, Mr. Prevost.
Sure. I'll just start a little bit first with the review process that we've had to date. Initially, reports, soil and geologic reports, were submitted to us for the tentative tract back in April of last year. We reviewed those reports, and we issued a correction letter. In that letter, we requested that they do additional geotechnical work as well as perform a fault investigation on the site. I would just say, in the seat of L.A., we've actually long recognized that the Hollywood Fault, and that it's considered an active fault. And so we've requested that investigation to be done last year. They subsequently, the consultants for the project, they did perform the fault investigation and submitted that to us last year. Our Grading Division staff reviewed the report and issued an approval letter in January of this year. I would say subsequently to that, in June, I received a call from Dr. James Dolan at USC requesting if he could get a copy of the report, and we made that available to him. And he called me back a few days later and said he had some concerns with the report. So we recognized that those concerns, and we immediately contacted developers' consultants and said we'd like you to address these concerns. At this point, we feel that the approval for the tentative tract is still a valid approval. We've discussed with the consultants, and they are going to perform some additional work to satisfy the concerns that have been raised. And we will be reviewing that in the future. And I would just say that when we receive those reports, as soon as we receive them, they are public information, and at that time, anybody is welcome to get a copy of the report and provide any comments they want to us. We'll certainly provide a copy to Dr. Dolan and receive his input as part of our review process. So it'll be a very open review process.
Great.
I'd like to make a couple of comments about the letter from Dr. Parrish, who supervises the California Geological Survey. I called Dr. Parrish yesterday morning, and so I would like to, based on that conversation, just clarify a couple of things from the letter. Actually, let me back up a moment and just say, the role of the state geologic survey is they evaluate faults throughout the state of California, and it's their task under the Alquies Prillo Fault Studies Act to establish study zones around faults that they believe to be active. And that is the study that they will be performing here for the Hollywood Fault. And I've been long talking to the state over the past several years about trying to zone this fault. So their study is going to be only to determine the limits of, well, one, the activity level of the fault, but pretty much throughout the profession, it's accepted that this meets the criteria of an active fault. That's the first criteria that they have to satisfy themselves with. And then beyond that, the purpose of the study is really to establish boundaries for the zone, and the zone is a study zone. And so what that means is, after they've established the zone, any project for development of buildings for habitable use within that zone requires a fault investigation, the same as the fault investigation that we have already required for Millennium. So I just want to make that clear, that we're treating, we started last year treating this project as if it is already in a state study zone.
Great, thank you very much. Let's see if we have any other members, questions from other members. I don't believe that we do. If you've got any of that documented that you can submit for the record as well, that'd be great. We've got two on the queue. Mr. Bonin, followed by Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Question primarily for DOT, a couple of transportation-related questions, and if there's somebody from Caltrans here, it might also be helpful if they could come to the table. First question strictly to DOT is regarding traffic mitigations. You know, we do a lot of talk in Los Angeles about transit-oriented development. I'm wondering if you could detail for us the ways in which this project is transit-serving, what's being done about shuttle buses.
If we could have you, I'm sorry, for one second. If you could actually just speak from the podium, since we didn't have you down yet. We'll keep the staff for now at the table for additional follow-up.
So Tom, if you could, thank you. So Tom, if you could speak to what's being done to facilitate alternative means of transportation related to this project?
Good morning. My name is Tom Coranzo with the L.A. DOT. Let me just open by saying that DOT worked closely with the applicant and with their traffic consultant to guide the preparation of the traffic study and to guide the preparation of the transportation mitigation program. Now, given the amount of transit service provided near the project site, there was already an inherent incentive for the project's employees and tenants to utilize public transportation. So the mitigation program really focuses around a very aggressive trip reduction program, which includes things like alternative work schedules and telecommuting and things that we've heard of, but also providing car-share amenities on-site. The applicant has agreed to improve the sidewalks to enhance access to the local transit stops and the Hollywood Vine Station. They're also improving this traffic signal equipment at 35 intersections surrounding the site. But really, the focus of the mitigation program was to reduce vehicle trips through--
What about bikes and dash shuttles?
I believe one of the items in the trip reduction program was to provide a financial contribution to the city's bike plan trust fund, so that we could use that money to implement some of the bike improvements that are identified in the city's bike plan. Also, the community benefits package that the applicant has agreed to includes mobility funds for either expanded dash transit services in the area or some other type of local circulator for surrounding the project site.
Thank you. And I guess the question for both DOT and for Caltrans is, Caltrans came to the table, as I understand it, fairly late in this process. So I'm wondering, going forward, how we can avoid that and what sort of procedures we can put into place to establish a better working relationship with Caltrans so they can get fed into the process sooner?
Well, I think we are very happy to report that we have been working closely with them recently. We've had some very productive meetings, and our goal is to coordinate better with them, and we're working on developing a consistent methodology for how we assess impacts, not just for projects in Hollywood, but for the entire city, and a methodology that works for both agencies. Having said that, I believe Aziz Alatar from Caltrans is here. We will be working with him and his staff to address the concerns they have with our methodology, and then to help us better understand how they want us to measure the impacts on the freeway system.
Mr. Bonin, your time has expired, but if you wanted to continue to ask questions, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Kukorian. We can come back to you if you push the button again.
Sure, if I could just say, I'd be happy to meet after the meeting or later with Caltrans and DOT to see what I can do to try to facilitate those partnerships better.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you. Just first to follow up on Mr. Bonin's question, Caltrans's concerns were some of my concerns as well, because my constituents commute on the 101, and so I'm concerned about ensuring that we have minimized that traffic impact. Can we have Caltrans, did you say there's a Caltrans representative here now? Okay. If they could come forward now, I'd like to hear if, to what degree, the concerns that you had previously expressed have been addressed through discussions about mitigation measures and whether you believe that the potential mitigation measures that are being discussed will address the concerns that Caltrans has previously had.
Good morning, still morning, I think. I'm Aziz Alatar. I'm with Caltrans, Department of Transportation. And what I can say to address the question is that we have been working closely with the city and the developer and the consultant to address the concerns that we have regarding the impacts to the Hollywood freeway. We've had meetings as late as last Friday. They seem to be fruitful, but that's the extent that we've worked things out thus far.
Okay. So in the event that, what will be the next steps in this process of consideration of traffic mitigations as it impacts the freeway as we move forward on this project?
Well, I believe that the traffic study and the mitigation program addresses the impacts of the project. I believe beyond that, an agreement between the developer and Caltrans, it would be voluntary on the developer's side. We feel that the traffic study was conducted according to the L.A. CEQA guide and the L.A. DOT's traffic study guidelines. Having said that, I believe an agreement is being worked out between Caltrans and the developer. I guess I'll leave it at that.
Okay. My time's expired. I'm going to have seismic questions, too, but I'll come back to that.
Well, there's no other speakers on the queue, so if you want to go ahead and ask your--
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand this. First, let me just say, in response to, well, a few of the speakers who, you know, asked that we give consideration to this in great detail, I have to say for the record that when, you know, hundreds of pages of argument and information are dropped on our desk on the morning that this is supposed to be ready for hearing, it's just humanly impossible to be able to consider and adjust this, and I-- No, before you clap, don't clap yet, because I'm going to say it's inexcusable. This project has been going on and under consideration for this many years. There's time to have press conferences days before this hearing. There's time to, you know, provide this information to news outlets, but there isn't time to provide it to the council members who are going to decide this matter before the morning of the hearing. It's inexcusable. And I would say, Mr. City Attorney, I'd like to ask-- And I would say, Mr. City Attorney, I'd like to ask that any of this information that has been provided to us this morning needs to be recognized as incapable of being considered as part of the record on this hearing. I just feel that it should be stated for the record that dropping things on the council at the last minute, I mean, literally, the very last minute, and then expecting that to be considered as part of the public record on a fair hearing matter, it is just, is, I think, unreasonable to expect the council members to be able to evaluate this. So I think that these matters that have been submitted to us today, this morning, should be excluded from the record, as far as I'm concerned. Now, on those geologic points, though, there is, there has been studies in the record. The assumption of the city in this process has been that this project is within an earthquake zone, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the remaining critical issue that the state geologist wants to consider is the exact location of this fault, whether it proceeds onto the footprint of the project essentially. Is that right?
Well, if I may, but the state geologist, what they're really determining is the boundaries of the zone for future development that may occur and to see which properties in the area are within the zone.
So on that point, it's a moot point, because you're already assuming it to be within the zone. So whatever the boundaries are, you're already assuming this project is within the zone, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So then the next issue on seismic safety is, there has, we're dealing with entitlements now. At some point, there's going to be a building. And that building is going to have to be according to an architect's plans. And those plans are going to have to be reviewed. And you have an opportunity at that point to determine, based on the state geologist's additional information and whatever other information that's going to be coming within the next six months, you'll have the opportunity to evaluate that and evaluate the architectural integrity of these plans based on that information before a building permit is issued. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that is what the state law requires, is it not, that before a building permit is issued, that those things be taken into account?
Mr. Kukorian, your time is up, so if you can just wrap it up.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mitch O'Farrell to close. Thank you.
Want to say a few words, and then I'm going to actually ask Mr. Chair if I could invite Jerry Newman of the project team up to talk about Caltrans a little bit. But before I do that, I just want to let you know, let my colleagues know, that I've been speaking directly with Caltrans up until yesterday afternoon. I'm Mr. Miles, the Area 7 Director. And there is no opposition to this project from Caltrans. And I'm committed, and Mr. Miles knows this, and I would like my colleagues to know this as well, I'm also committed to creating a template moving forward so that any last-minute misunderstandings and clarifications with regard to EIRs be addressed in advance of any upcoming project. This is a project that I inherited, quite frankly, and have been working feverishly on for three weeks, but we need to move forward. So having said that, I'd love to have Mr. Jerry Newman, if I may, for one minute.
Okay. Before you speak, Mr. Price, did you have something to say to add to this as well?
Thank you, Mr. Chair members. And I appreciate the comments made by both sides in this matter. Certainly is an important issue. In a former life as state senator, I represented the area where the Millennium Project is located. And so I am familiar with the area, the issues and the concerns that have been raised by me and the residents. I think among the places in L.A. where we can support high-density growth, it's downtown and in Hollywood. This project, I think, represents the kind of transit-oriented development in, that L.A. needs to make the, makes L.A. the 21st century global economy. I think the economy is going to, the community is going to benefit from this project by the concessions agreed to by the developer to mitigate impacts from the project. Councilman Farrell supports this project. He knows, I think, what's best for the community. He's been working on the project for six years as chief of staff and now as the councilman. I respect his judgment and I'm supportive of the project. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. O'Farrell, I believe, is ready to close. Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and close this. With all due respect, Jerry, there. And I just want to say, in closing, the Millennium Project is well-designed, respects the community concerns, and as a result, they've made significant changes, namely the height reduction of the two towers, from the original 55- and 45-story iteration to 39- and 35-stories, while preserving a 22% open space dedication, which was of great importance to my predecessor and myself. The open space will be used to enhance the pedestrian experience through public transit linkages and through block connections for the project throughout the area. Additionally, it should be highlighted that although the project is located in the Hollywood signage supplemental use district, it is committed to no off-site signage as a direct result of community input. Billboards and digital displays will not be part of this project. They will not be entitled for this project. Today, I introduced an amending motion to codify some of the community benefits that my staff and I have been working on for the last three weeks, associated with the project, including seed funding for area parks, a $4.8 million allocation to develop new affordable housing in the immediate area, and funding for city planning to develop the Central Hollywood Design Overlay Zone, which I have long felt needed to come into place since the adoption of the community plan update. That will help us establish strong controls for development going forward on Hollywood Boulevard and the rest of Hollywood. The project includes design regulations that will preserve views of the iconic landmarks, including the Capitol Records Building and the Hollywood Hills. The historic Capitol Records and Gogodi Buildings will be preserved following the Secretary of Interior Standards and be complemented with public plazas, parkways, and community arts programming. The design regulations established a ground floor space and provide for pedestrian-friendly experience through setback and minimum separation requirements between buildings in order to reduce massing at street level and limit visual crowding of the historic buildings. The Millennium Project will preserve existing view corridors from certain key vantage points to the Hollywood Hills. It's a project that embraces alternative modes of transportation, as has been discussed. This Millennium Project is a game changer. There's no doubt about that. It's a game changer for the Hollywood area, and it's consistent with a long-range vision for Hollywood. It'll bolster the local economy through job creation, both temporary, up to 3,000 construction jobs, and permanent, around 1,500 permanent jobs, with new tax revenue, critical to new funds, to help with the general fund, which will increase the standard delivery of services that we all want to see. Colleagues, I ask for your yes vote.
Thank you very much. Seeing no members on the queue, we're going to go ahead, and we're going to take both items separately. Mr. City Attorney first.
And I just wanted to clarify, following up on Mr. Kukorian's statement regarding the documents, your reference was not regarding the city documents that were submitted?
No, the documents that were submitted by the parties to the, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Clark. That puts us, we'll go ahead and vote on the items separately.
Correct, sir. First would be item 21, as amended by motion, O'Farrell, Karats.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, the next item.
That's item 22, sir.
Item 22, we'll go ahead and open the roll and close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, thank you. Both of those items passed.
Item 22 go forth with?
Both items will go forth with, without objection. We'll go ahead and take, shh, we still have business before this body. If you can make, if you're those who are leaving chambers, if you can do so in a quiet fashion, we'd really appreciate that. We'll take item 28 next for cards. We have one card, John Walsh. One minute on the clock for item 28, please.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential, number 28, installing always stop signs in West L.A. in favor, and see you in court.
Great, thank you. That concludes the public comment cards. Item 28, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that will conclude all items for which 12 members require to be present. We'll go ahead and take us to the next item, Mr. Clark.
Item 43, it was called special for cards, and it was being held for an amending motion, sir.
Great, thank you very much. Has the amending motion been circulated?
Yes.
Okay. We'll go ahead and take the cards. Arnold Sachs, followed by Dr. Tom Williams, followed by Doug Arsenal, followed by John Walsh, followed by Omar Baldwin, in that order.
Walsh passes.
Arnold Sachs, no longer in the room. Dr. Williams?
There's no amending motion on this anymore.
Okay.
Oh, there's not, so we can just roll.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, it was, please, go ahead.
Dr. Tom Williams, L.A., 32 Neighborhood Council. Regarding transit villages, in general, great support for them. We haven't done a very good job on them, though, in the past. So we would hope that this proposal could be amended to specifically include Department of Planning, maybe L.A. DOT and MTA, having a community advisory panel for each station, because we have one in Highland Park that created a huge controversy for now, something like four or five years, because the rail was badly planned. Single-story, single-family dwellings immediately adjacent, and now it's a historic preservation zone, and everything wants to be very high. However, at Avenue 26th on the Gold Line, we had a problem in that they weren't high enough. And there was a cornfields-a-royal Seiko Plan that specifically did not emphasize the transit village, although people needed the housing in that location. So please add to this that each station be provided with a citizens or a community advisory panel to avoid such things as we have in Avenue 57 in the future on the west side. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Doug? Good afternoon.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council members. VICA strongly supports investment in TOD along the San Fernando Valley's only mass transit system, the Metro Orange Line. We hope that this will be part of a more comprehensive effort to upgrade the corridor by installing light rail. Light rail was a clear choice during the first decade of planning the Orange Line and remains the most economically efficient option. We ask the council's support of Councilmember Labanga's resolution to support Metro's investment in Orange Line light rail. The valley has outgrown the current bus rapid transit system, with weekday ridership more than double the capacity, forcing potential riders back into their cars. VICA thanks you for prioritizing transit-oriented development along the Orange Line, but this will only be truly valuable once there's an appropriate transit system in place. Thank you for this opportunity, and we look forward to your continued support for transit-oriented development along the Orange Line light rail system. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Omar Baldwin?
My name is Omar Baldwin, and I am for the approval of this proposal. And I would also like to say, the peace democracy, I want to give you guys a little insight about it. I'm trying to set up a meeting with the mayor and trying to give him all the ideas and all that stuff, but that's a, it's not working out like that.
This really isn't about the transit-oriented development?
Oh, yeah, it's about the transit program and the money I approve it to go there. I mean, if I was to defer it, I would say to, to help it come to my proposal. But I want to tell you guys about the peace democracy. Like, the education will be everything in the peace democracy. Like, how we would achieve peace, we will actually vote for it. We'll run a campaign, a political campaign, and we will explain to the citizens of our city.
Mr. President, I do not believe he's talking about this item. Yeah, I'm sorry, that was the second warning. It's not on the item, so if you can bring it back, it'll be the final warning to bring it back to the item.
You guys have comments for anything that's not on the agenda? Is that at the end of the town hall meeting?
I believe this individual already spoke in general public comment.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. That'll be, conclude your time then. Okay, we'll go ahead and seeing no speakers on the queue, we'll open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, where does this take that?
Mr. President, I believe this takes us to Special 1, and I believe the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Great, thank you.
Since the posting of today's agenda, yesterday's special election to fill the vacancy in the office of council member for the 6th District was held, with Ms. Nuri Martinez declared as the unofficial winner. Immediate action is required to appoint Ms. Martinez as chief deputy of CD6 pending certification of the election results in order for, in order that she may familiarize herself with the office as soon as possible. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substance of motion.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. You know, I just wanted to say to you, Felipe, that this is unbelievable, in my view. Given my 800 years of experience where it relates to campaigning, I don't think I've ever seen anything like this. I think it was because you had a candidate that was prepared to bleed and did bleed. I have to compliment you, my brothers Alex and Big Tone. And I just wanted you to know that to be associated with this in any way is an honor for me. And with that said, we had no speakers on the queue. I guess we do have to vote on the findings. But see, I like to do that to make the city attorney get fidgety every now and then. So we are going to vote on the findings. So, Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, so now that item is before us. Hey, Mr. Fuentez, go forward.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's really important to note, gentlemen, and I say that temporarily, that Los Angeles is really going to benefit as a result of this, I think, hard-fought race. And I think we really need to congratulate both Ms. Montañez and Ms. Martinez for their efforts to put themselves forward and to give us certainty that this body will be balanced and will have a perspective that I think is going to be incredibly important. But I have always said on these races that it's terribly important for them to be very hard-fought, because our residents, our constituents, Los Angeles deserves no less. And so my congratulations go to both candidates, and I'm eagerly looking forward to working with the new council member from Council District 6. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And I too would like to join in congratulating a great friend and our newest colleague as well, and urge your eye vote as well on this, and look forward to working with Nuri. With that, colleagues, if we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Great, thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and open it up, back up for general public comment, and we'll call, and these, Henry, want to come on up? Followed by Erica Bristol, Marguerite Moen. Good afternoon.
Yes, good afternoon. We're back here addressing the buyback for so-called hiring-hall time. As you know, Hackland Coal MOU shows the names of everybody who agreed to accept public funds and shelter them- funds and shelter them and defer them from payment of employees in lieu of providing or prevailing, and some do. So, and the people holding these government funds are fully aware that the government has a right to return these funds, subject to the 90-day written notice, to provide those funds back to Hackla or Cola from which they came in the first place. But a requirement of lasers is that I have to get the union to sign off on, guarantee that I won't get any pension benefit for hours of service in a union pension plan for the hour of government service I provided here, and those contributions we're drawn, withheld from. So how do you propose this to happen? Until you give the union, or the people sheltering this money, subject to a 90-day written notice to return this money, it can't happen. Those are genuine public funds, I can't get benefits in a union pension plan for hours of government service. I mean, you only have benefits come from the employer that provided, that you provided the service to. I provided service to Hackla or Cola, those are government benefits, no matter who's holding the money at the present time. So you better look into this, because they're going to cut their own throat by thinking this is their money. And I don't want to see the union get destroyed because of ignorance or the council.
Thank you very much. Erica Bristol, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you. My name is Erica Bristol, I'm an attorney in Encino, California. I represent Dr. Xyla MacLeod in a matter concerning the African Community Resource Center. The ACRC is one of the few centers in the city of Los Angeles, not to mention the state of California, that provides services to victims of human trafficking and domestic violence. Currently, there are actions in the works to possibly dissolve this charity. We are strongly urging the city to keep this charity open and to also adopt the proposal that I submitted to the City of Los Angeles attorneys on July 19th, which provides oversight and accountability and structure for this charity. This is one of the most important charities in the city, and instead of having this charity as a blemish from certain actions in the past, by keeping this charity open, it will serve as a beacon for what services states and cities can provide to victims of human trafficking and domestic violence. So we also ask that this proposal be put on the city council agenda for consideration. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Our next speaker, Reverend Ferguson, is that correct? Dr. Ferguson, followed by Dr. MacLeod.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
My name is Reverend Dr. Olutunji Ferguson, originally from Sierra Leone, a citizen of the United States, and I've been here since 1969.
Thank you.
I represent the African and American Ministers Association, and coming from a country that has the largest incidence of female genital mutilation in the world, I support Dr. MacLeod in her endeavor to reorganize this shelter, and at this point, I'll relinquish my time to Dr. MacLeod. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Protemp, and to all of the city council meeting, and to my very good friend, Councilman Current Price. My name is Ambassador Dr. Xyla MacLeod, and I represent the African and American ambassadors to the continent of Africa in the Middle East, also parent and community action team. I'm here today to appeal to you and to plead to you not to close one of our only shelters that we have, not only in the city of Los Angeles, but in the state of California, and very few around the United States. The reason why I'm here today is because we have a critical situation and problem with the African community. As an ambassador to Africa, I have worked with Congresswoman Da'eni Watson, the Councilman Current Price, the Merv Dammely, our former congressman and lieutenant governor, as well as many other elected officials, and one of our other founding members was Yvonne Bradway-Burke. We are here today because we are founding members, and we have been with this organization since the 80s. We do not wish for it to be closed, we are doing everything in our power. We have met with the city attorney and the Housing Department, David Zakes, and I must say, he's been a very kind and fair person, I want to take my hat off to him. We also met with the former city attorney who did everything in his power during his time that can help. I'm a member and a mother of West Angeles Church, former member in NAACP, Black Women Association, also the National Council of Negro Women, and a former member of the Inglewood School Board. I have a record coming from 1972 until this day. The reason why I'm letting you know all of the organization that I serve on is because you would know that I'm very, very serious. And before we rally and hold a press conference on the steps of the city, we wanted to come to you first. Thank you, and may God bless you.
Oh, thank you very much, and God bless you, thank you very much. That'll conclude public comment for today, I believe that's all the agenda items as well. So with that, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred, that clears the desk?
Yes, sir.
Oh, great, thank you very much. Members, any announcements? Seeing none, if everybody in the chambers can please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Bonin?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to adjourn today in memory of Stuart Rupp, who was a longtime music teacher who worked for L.A. USD for 35 years at Paul Revere Middle School. He grew up in Eagle Rock, California, and graduated from Oxy College, earning a bachelor's degree in speech, and then a second bachelor's degree in music and a teaching credential. After he retired from teaching, he actually went on to volunteer for the L.A. Conservancy and as a docent for the L.A. Chamber Orchestra. He survived by his wife, his children, his three grandchildren, and his longtime companion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Mr. Karats?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's with great sadness that I ask that we adjourn in memory of Arlene Godfrey Land, who passed away on July 9th at the age of 79. Arlene was the mother of a good friend of many of us, Abby Land, who's the mayor of West Hollywood, and I had the honor of serving with her back when I was on that city's city council, and I've been proud to benefit from her leadership and inspiration on many humanitarian and political causes. And I know Abby learned much from the wonderful example set by her mother, who leaves daughters Abby Land and Lisa Land Maloney, and son John, as well as a niece, a nephew, a cousin, grandchildren, grandnieces, and a grandnephew. She was predeceased by her parents, Morris and Edith Godfrey, brother Mark Godfrey, and former husband Harvey Land, and a memorial service was held for her earlier this month at Temple Achavat Achim in, I don't know how to pronounce this, Gloucester, Massachusetts?
Gloucester.
Gloucester, I knew I was pronouncing that wrong. In lieu of flowers, it's been requested that donations be made either to that temple or to aid for cancer research in Newton Center, Massachusetts, where actually a bunch of my relatives live, or to the Open Door, a food pantry that feeds hungry people in Massachusetts, or to the Trevor Project, which we're all more familiar with, which focuses on suicide prevention among LGBT youth. And I know this is a great loss for all of those who knew her.
All right, thank you very much. Members, I would like to adjourn in memory of a friend of mine, Howard Allen Rosenberg, passed away at the age of 81. Howard was a veteran of the U.S. Army and served our country during the Korean War. He held a Bachelor of Science degree in marketing from the University of Baltimore. Howard was a devoted husband, father, grandfather, uncle, brother, and friend to all who knew him. His wife and the love of his life, Gail Rosenberg, his children and grandchildren loved and adored him. During his career, philanthropy became a major part of his life. Since the early 1980s, he was the chairman of the Father's Day Council, Los Angeles, which produced the annual Father of the Year Award Gala, which honors role models, fathers, and others to benefit diabetes research. Because of the event's success, Howard had the vision to produce the gala fundraiser in markets across the United States, and was the driving force in expanding the National Father's Day Council into 36 markets worldwide, raising more than $40 million for diabetes research. In 2005, Howard was honored by the Father's Day Council in Los Angeles with the Father of the Year Award. The American Diabetes Association is the proud charitable partner of this very meaningful event. May Howard Rosenberg rest in peace. On a personal note as well, I was honored by the Father's Day Council and by Howard years ago as a Father of the Year. I've listed that on my resume ever since as my highest accomplishment ever. And I was nominated, not by Howard, but another dear friend of mine, who was a recipient, Congressman Tony Cardenas, and who honored me in that. And it was an incredible event and a great evening. My kid surprised me with a video that they did that Howard helped put together. He had a personal touch on every recipient, and from presidents of the United States and others on down, that were honored with this award. I proudly display that in my office as well. Howard was certainly an incredible human being, he had so much passion, not only for this award, which he felt was the most important thing, to be honored as a father, to be Father of the Year. He'd worked on this for so many years, and then was finally honored himself by his peers and all who have been the recipient of this. He was an incredible man and will live on in our hearts forever, may he rest in peace. Thank you all, that concludes all the adjourning motions, and we are adjourned, thank you.